All right, let's pray and then we'll get started. Heavenly Father, Lord, as we begin, Lord, this series of special meetings, Lord, on the topic of what is your motive? Lord, again, I pray and ask, Lord, as always do, Lord, help me to preach. Lord, I'm not a polished speaker. I'm not someone, Lord, who was trained, as it were, as so many are, Lord, in performing, because this isn't a performance, this is preaching. But, Lord, I want to make sure that what is said and what is done is in accordance with your will, your purposes and your ends. So I pray, Father, help me, Lord, as I give myself to you. Lord, and use me, as I've had the privilege of being used for so many years now, every time that I step into the pulpit. Lord, to share with my brothers and sisters in Christ what you've provided. Lord, let it work your will in their lives. And we pray and ask for it in Christ's name. Amen. Three essentials, we've talked about them many times before, that are needed to guide all that the believer does in their lives. And that is the glorification of the Lord, the edification of the church, and the propagation of the gospel of Jesus Christ of the lost. It's not just enough to do these three things alone. But your motive behind doing each one of them must be correct and must be proper. Okay, it's not a matter of performing something by rots, performing something, if you will, religious basis, okay, I checked off the box and so, you know, I did what I was supposed to do. What's your motive? Because when you stand before the Lord Jesus Christ at his judgment seat after the blessed hope, after the rapture of the church, that is going to be how what you've done for him is going to be weighed. What was your motive behind doing it? Not what did you do? Because I tell you, there's a lot of people out there, oh, I've done this, I've done that, I do this and I do that, all these kinds of... What was the motive behind why you did it? Okay, the glorification of the Lord, the motive should be, because he's worthy of this glorification. And we want to see him being glorified because we love him. We want to edify the church, our brothers and sisters in Christ, because we desire to see them, as well as our individual selves, edified in the Lord, to utilize the gifts that have been given to us by the Holy Spirit of God for that purpose, again, because we love one another. And we... The propagation of the gospel, the sharing of the gospel of Jesus Christ, because it glorifies the Lord, it edifies the church, and it gives the lost hope. It provides them the salvation as it was produced by the Lord himself, and secures for the Lord those for whom he died. It deserves to have, the lost, who all of us once were. I want to go over to the Gospel of Mark, chapter 12, for just a moment. I'm still in my introduction. Eventually, I'll get around to point number one. Mark, chapter 12, let's look at verses 28 to 33. Mark 12, picking it up at 28. "One of the scribes came, and having heard them reasoning together, and perceiving that he had answered them well, asked him, 'Which is the first commandment of all?'" Okay, this is after Jesus had been talking with the Sadducees and put them to shame. "And Jesus answered him, 'The first of all the commandments is hero Israel; the Lord our God is one Lord; and thou shalt love the Lord thy God with all thy heart, and with all thy soul, and with all thy mind, and with all thy strength.'" This is the first commandment. "And the second is like, namely this: Thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself; there is none other commandment greater than these." "And the scribe said unto him, 'Well, master, thou hast said the truth; for there is one God, and there is none other but he; and to love him with all the heart, and with all the understanding, and with all the soul, and with all the strength, and to love his neighbor as himself, is more than all whole burnt offerings and sacrifices.'" These two principles are the very basic fundamentals of human behavior expected by the Lord of every individual. So the context of these meetings, these messages, is going to be, what's your motive? What is your motive? What is behind all that you do and all that you think in your lives as born-again believers? In the first of our messages, we're going to look at three individuals. Their interactions with one another and their motivations in those interactions. We're going to be looking at Satan, Adam, and Eve. So we're going to go over to Genesis, chapter 3, where these three come together. Genesis, chapter 3, verses 1 through 9. "Now the serpent was more supple than any beast of the field, which the Lord God had made; and he said unto the woman, 'Yea, hath God said, ye shall not eat of every tree of the garden.'" "And the woman said unto the serpent, 'We may eat of the fruit of the trees of the garden, and of the fruit of the tree which is in the midst of the garden; God has said, ye shall not eat of it, neither shall ye touch it, lest ye die.'" "And the serpent said unto the woman, 'Ye shall not surely die; for God doth know that in the day that ye eat thereof, then your eyes shall be opened, and ye shall be as gods, knowing good and evil.'" "And when the woman saw that the tree was good for food, and that it was pleasant to the eyes, and a tree to be desired to make one wise, she took of the fruit thereof, and did eat; and gave also unto her husband with her, and he did eat. And the eyes of them both were opened, and they knew that they were naked; and they sowed fig leaves together, and made themselves aprons. And they heard the voice of the Lord God walking in the garden in the cool of the day. And Adam and his wife hid themselves from the presence of the Lord God amongst the trees in the garden; and the Lord God called unto Adam, and said unto him, 'Where art thou? Where art thou?'" Satan, originally named Lucifer, was the very first sentient being whom God created. He was the first of the five cherubs that God created. He would be the representative in the animal kingdom of the cold-blooded creatures whom the Lord would create. The cherubs are spirit beings, as are the angels. Lucifer, as it tells us over in Ezekiel, chapter 38, verse 14, is the covering cherub. He was the most beautiful being the Lord would ever create. Again, that's also in Ezekiel 28, verses 12, 13. Along with having jewels and other things as part of his body, he actually had musical instruments built into his body. And he led all of heaven in the worship of God Almighty, as he hovered over the throne of God. What an incredible being he must have been. But Isaiah, chapter 14, verses 12 through 50, tells us of Lucifer's pride, and how he rebelled against the Lord and attempted a coup to take God's place. That is also in Ezekiel 28, verses 17, 18, and 19, where you're going to find those two things. Pride, it's the sin of pride, the very first sin to ever occur in all of creation. I, I. He was cast out of his position as the covering cherub, as well as being the lord over the earth and its angelic inhabitants. The universe was wiped out by God through a supernatural cataclysm, a flood. We read about over in Genesis, chapter 1, verses 1 and 2. "And when the Lord receded the waters from the universe, he recreated the earth in six literal 24-hour solar days. And he created a new king to rule over the earth, Adam, the man." Adam was the very first man to exist. He was created by God himself. And he was created in God's own image, in that he was a three-part being, having a body, a soul, and a spirit, just as the Trinity of God. You have the Father, you have the Word, and you have the Spirit of God. Genesis 1:28, let's read that verse. Genesis, chapter 1, verse 28. "God blessed them, and God said unto them, 'Be fruitful, and multiply, and replenish the earth, and subdue it, and have dominion over the fish of the sea, and over the fowl of the air, and over every living thing that moveth upon the earth.'" God put him in charge of everything. He anointed him king over the earth. Adam had replaced Satan. And so the devil hated man. He hates him today. He hates him with a hatred you can't grasp. And he sought some way to destroy him. He wanted to destroy him, number one, because he hated him and took his place, number one, he wanted to try to strike at the heart of God. So Genesis, chapter 2, verse 18. Here it says, "And the Lord God said, 'It is not good that man should be alone; I will make him a hell of meat for him.'" And there, pick it up at verse 21. "And the Lord God caused a deep sleep to fall upon Adam; and he slept, and he took one of his ribs, and closed up the flesh instead thereof; and the rib which the Lord God had taken from man made he a woman, and brought her unto the man. And Adam said, 'This is now bone of my bones, and flesh of my flesh; and she shall be called woman, because she was taken out of man. Therefore shall a man leave his father and his mother, and shall cleave unto his wife, and they shall be one flesh; and they were both naked, the man and his wife, and were not ashamed.'" The Lord created from Adam's own body a hell of meat for him. "And together they were to begin the process of repopulating and subduing the planet, the kingdom the Lord God had placed Adam over." Adam and Eve were innocent, as it tells us there in chapter 2, verses 15, 16, 17. "And the Lord God took the man, and put him in the garden of Eden, to dress him, to keep it; and the Lord God commanded man, saying, 'Of every tree of the garden thou mayest freely eat; but of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil thou shalt not eat of it; for in the day that thou eatest thereof, thou shalt surely die.'" Just like little children, like him. They knew nothing of either good or evil, not at all. They were perfect, free-willed beings, living in an absolutely perfect environment. They had no wants, they had no needs, there were no diseases, the animals were all friendly, and so there was nothing to threaten their mortal bodies. And as they had access, though, to the tree of life, when and if they needed it, something could happen, they had the potential of living forever in the flesh in which God had created them, to go along with their eternal souls and their everlasting spirit. They had one commandment, one commandment to keep, to remain righteous before God Almighty. Don't eat from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. Now, wouldn't you like to be able to live in such an idyllic situation? We will, we will one day. Oh, read Revelation 21, Revelation 22. We will, but we got to wait. It won't be how it's going to be again one day. Everything's going to come for the circle. This is God's intention for the race of men. But first, it was necessary to ensure that the Lord was going to end up with a race of beings who were sinless and who were free-willed, who loved God because they chose to love Him. And the process that was necessary to produce that, this desired end, began with these three created beings, Satan, Adam, and Eve. God's never been caught off guard. There's never been a hoops, I wasn't counting on that. God knew exactly what was going to happen here. There was purpose behind everything. What were their motives that were related here in Genesis, chapter 3? Genesis 3, 1 through 24. We went down through a lot of it. We're going to read the rest of it here. I'm going to pick it up. Let's see where did I leave off? Verse 9, let's go all the way down to the rest of the chapter, down to verse 24. "And he said, 'I heard thy voice in the garden; I was afraid, because I was naked, and I hid myself.'" "And he said, 'Who told thee that thou wast naked? Hast thou eaten of the tree whereof I commanded thee, that thou shouldst not eat?'" And the man said, "'The woman who thou gavest to be with me, she gave me of the tree, and I did eat.'" It's like a little kid. "The dog did it, it wasn't me. The baby did it, it wasn't me." "And the Lord said unto the woman, 'What is this that thou hast done?'" And the woman said, "'The serpent begirled me, and I did eat.'" "And the Lord said unto the serpent, 'Because thou hast done this, thou art cursed above all cattle, and above every beast in the field; upon thy belly shalt thou go, and dost thou shall eat all the days of thy life; and I will put enmity between thee and the woman,' not the man, the woman, 'and between thy seed.'" Satan has a seed. "'And her seed; it shall bruise thy head, and thou shalt bruise his heel.'" "Unto the woman he said, 'I will greatly multiply thy sorrow and thy conception in sorrow; thou shalt bring forth children; and thy desire shall be to thy husband, and he shall rule over thee.'" "And Adam he said, 'Because thou hast hearkened unto the voice of thy wife, and it hast eaten of the tree, of which I commanded thee, saying, 'Thou shalt not eat of it; cursed is the ground for thy sake; and sorrow thou shalt eat of it all the days of thy life; thorns also and thistles shall it bring forth to thee; and thou shalt eat of the herb of the field; and the sweat of thy face shalt thou eat bread, till thou return unto the ground, for out of it wast thou taken; for dust thou art, and unto dust thou shalt return.'" "And Adam called his wife's name Eve, because she was the mother of all living. Unto Adam also and his wife did the Lord God make coats of skins, and clothed them. And the Lord God said, 'Behold, the man is become as one of us, to know good and evil; and now, lest he put forth his hand, and take also of the tree of life, and eat, and live forever.'" God does a merciful thing. Therefore the Lord God sent him forth from the garden of Eden to tell the ground from whence he was taken. "So we drove out the man, and he placed at the east of the garden of Eden cherubims, and a flaming sword, which turned every way, to keep the way of the tree of life." Now that we've read the entire passage, we're going to dig into each one of the individuals and their actions, their intentions, and the resultant judgment by the Lord on each one of them that is established just by what their motives were for what they had done. Now, remembering the predicates for correct and proper motives, okay? Glorification of the Lord, the edification of the church, and propagation of the gospel of Jesus Christ. Let's take a look at the devil first. Notice he avoids Adam. Though Adam's the actual target, this is how the devil will very often work. He goes after Eve, knowing she's the weaker vessel. That's 1 Peter, chapter 3, verse 71. My brain not so clear tonight, didn't get a lot of sleep. Let's try verse 7, there's no 7 in 1. 1 Peter 3:7. This intention here, his intention is to, he's going to try to force Adam into making a fatal choice in order to save his life. That's what he's after. He's not interested in Eve. He's interested in getting at Adam. He deceives Eve through subtlety. We've talked about that in the past. He takes advantage of her poor understanding of God's words. That's why I make such a point of knowing God's words, to cause her to question God's commandment. "Yea, hath God said." Then he outright denies God's words and presents a bogus wisdom, a lie based upon his own prejudiced opinions of God, that present a malicious explanation as to why the Lord God has given that commandment. Oh, God doesn't want you to be like him. He's trying to keep you from having something that you can have, and that's why he told you, if you eat from it, no, if you'll eat from that tree, you'll have the knowledge of good and evil, just like, you'll be just like God. And his mentality and his tactics and his behavior have not changed one bit in 6,000 years. If anything, he's become better, he's become sharper, he's become far more subtle in how he goes after mankind when he hates. The Lord's judgment on Satan meets with his motives. He's cursed above all cattle. Doesn't make sense, but, oh, he's going to crawl on the ground. Above, greater than, okay, greater than. Cattle are domesticated animals, like sheep, goats, hawks, and dogs and cats. They are subservient to man and to man's needs. He's not talking about putting him down beneath them, them walking over him, which they, you know, they are going to do, but above them as in greater than they are. In other words, the cattle are in subjection and servitude to mankind. They are cursed. And Satan is cursed above this, greater than this. Lucifer had once been the most beautiful, the most glorious, and the wisest of God's created being, when he becomes here, the great red dragon, that old serpent, as it says in Revelation 12, okay? Like he's a fearsome-looking creature, and he's full of malignant hatred and wrath. But guess what? He'd been cursed above the cattle that are subservient to man, greater than, because... What's it tell us over in James, chapter 4, verse 7? He can be defeated. He can be defeated by mere mortal man. Resist the devil, and he will flee from you. That's what it's talking about right there. Cursed above the cattle, greater than, that because you're going... If man commands you in my name, resist the devil, and he will flee from you. I command you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the blood that he shed! And he's got to listen. He's got to do it. He has no... Bible says so. From the most glorious created being to the most repulsive of creatures. And every snake, now we're talking about literal snakes, that slithers across to a path and causes you to shudder, reminds you, okay? And reminds him of that fact. I know a lot of folks scared to death of snakes. I'll tell you what, that snake, if I were afraid of you, and you are a vif, it's going to run. Resist the devil, and he will flee from you. His inescapable end is going to be in the lake of fire, and he knows it. He knows it. But that's the insanity of sin, folks, is that he's going to keep resisting and keep fighting, and right down to the bitter end, the very... You know, when he comes up after being a thousand years chained in the pit, the first thing he does is raise a rebellion against Jesus Christ. Let's look at Eve. Her motive is clearly stated there in verse 6 of Genesis, chapter 3. "And when the woman saw that the tree was good for food, and that it was pleasant to the eyes, and a tree to be desired to make one wise, she took of the fruit thereof, and did eat, and gave also unto her husband with her, and he did eat, lest in the eyes, lest in the flesh, pride of life." It's the power of positive thinking to counteract the negative commandment of Almighty God, thou shalt not. "thou shall not." That's what people hate, you know, they hear all the, "Oh, the Old Testament, you know, all that negative and they're all, you know..." Sorry. God said, "Thou shalt not." He said, "Thou shalt not" about a great many things. But they find some way, well, you know, it...